Good evening and welcome to the May meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. As always, we will begin with a readout of actions taken in closed session. Trustee Milchiker.
Yes, thank you. There's one item to read out. On a seven to zero vote, the Board appointed Dixie Bullock as interim chancellor effective July 1, 2010, subject to approval of a mutually agreeable contract. Thank you.
You're so short, could you stand up?
Look who's talking. Hello Dixie, get another round of applause. I have several requests to speak, and let me just ask, I have Ronnie Geyer from Assemblyman Van Tran's office, and Lisa Johnson from Assemblyman Jeff Miller's office, so I understand are here with presentations. Number one, thank you very much. Number two, we have a resolution that we're going to give a little bit later, and so, actually give before public comments, so I'll call you folks up then, rather than wait for the public comments section of today's festivities. So, so that you know procedurally, that's how we'll handle this. All right, at this point, we have an invocation to be led by Trustee Lang, and the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead, and so we invite you to stand, please, for the invocation.
Yesterday's in a register article, which I hope many of you caught, was about a woman by the name of Betty Teasdale, now eighty-seven-year-old woman, who helped rescue more than two hundred orphans from the Anloch Orphanage some thirty-five years ago. The article frankly brought tears to my eyes. First, she and her husband adopted ten children from the orphanage, and just before the fall of Saigon, she left the comfort of home and family and flew to Vietnam and rescued the other duties in remarkable fashion. She was reunited from Little Saigon here, celebrating her heroism. One of her toddlers became a motivational speaker, hoping to inspire people just as Betty inspired him. One person can make a difference. Friday, all of us had the privilege of awarding hundreds of certificates at both of the colleges in ceremonies that both of our college presidents and their staffs should be proud of. Graduation is my favorite part of this job, the satisfaction of students who have accomplished at least part of their academic career goals through extraordinary efforts of all of us, trustees, administrators, faculty, and staff. While I'm certainly not trying to analogize the heroic efforts of a Betty Teasdale with our accomplishments, we should certainly never lose sight that despite whatever differences we have along the way, it's about making differences in people's lives.
Join me, please, for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. April is a bit of a sad month, we say goodbye to our student trustee, but May is a happy month, we say hello to a new student trustee. She was introduced to us last month, she is here to be sworn in, and she is Eve Shea, welcome aboard. And Eve, if you'd join me up here, we'll... Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eve Shea, do solemnly swear...
I, Eve Shea, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Eve, you'll have an opportunity in a moment for your first board report, but is there anything you would like to say, or any introductions you would like to give?
I just want to say that it's an honor to be on the board, and I am looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a couple of presentations, a couple of resolutions to present at this point. The first is for the Veterans Memorial Artist, the second for the college tennis team, and the third for IVC's twenty-fifth anniversary, and I am going to go to the podium, the chancellor's declined to join me, but let's start with the Veterans Memorial, and if I can bring up the representatives from Assemblyman Miller and Assemblyman Van Tran's office, that would be great.
I'm honored to read out this resolution honoring the people that created our Veterans Memorial sculpture on Saddleback College campus. It's not only a wonderful piece of memorial to our veterans, but it's also an incredible piece of art. It's art in public places. So can Professor Richard White and Fred Olson please come forward to the podium?
Fred isn't here.
Okay. Whereas Professor Richard White and Fred Olson are patriots and artists behind the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial, the most significant memorial to veterans at any community college campus in the nation, and whereas Professor Richard White and Fred Olson expertly created the Veterans Memorial with light in mind, positioning the sculpture so that eleven o'clock in the morning, on the eleventh day of the eleventh month each year, otherwise known as Veterans Day, the sun will fully illuminate the positive form of the soldier that serves as the memorial centerpiece. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate, commend, I'm sorry, do hereby commend and congratulate Professor Richard White and Fred Olson for their outstanding dedication to Americans, veterans, and well-deserved recognition as the artist of the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial.
Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Shea.
But wait, we're not done. Lisa Johnson here representing Assemblyman Jeff Miller.
On behalf of Assemblyman Jeff Miller, I would like to present this resolution to, thank you, to the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial. The Assemblymember is very proud to have such a beautiful memorial in his district, and especially because it's the only memorial of its kind on a college campus, and I am actually a student here and have seen this beautiful memorial being built throughout the years, so it's a very big honor to be a part of this, to be able to present this to you guys. Thank you.
And on behalf of Assemblyman Van Tran, Ronnie Geyer.
On behalf of Assemblyman Van Tran, and the Vietnamese people who really do appreciate so deeply us veterans who fought for their freedom, and applaud you all for supporting and loving the veterans who so selflessly brought more freedom and thus more love to the world, we would like to present a token of the California State Assembly's gratitude to Saddleback College as well. I was blessed to be at the groundbreaking, but that did not prepare me at all for the dedication. Your demonstration of love that reached out to us veterans, you had over a thousand people there, and your memorial must have at least a thousand lights of love. On behalf of the California State Assembly to Saddleback College Veterans Memorial, we present the certificate of recognition in honor of your outstanding support of America's veterans who so selflessly sacrifice on behalf of the freedom of others, and thus bring more love to the world. Thank you.
And it is appropriate for the President of the Saddleback to be up here and to receive these plaques.
Thank you so much, and the Veterans Memorial is not only beautiful during the day, but at night when it's illuminated, it's incredible, so I invite all of you that have an opportunity to come at night and see this beautiful piece of sculpture illuminated in a place of quiet reflection for our students for generations to come, hopefully. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you for the presentations, thank you very much for tonight. Real quick, the resolution that the Board so graciously did tonight were for our two artists. That was for Professor Richie Wright and for Fred Olson. They are the visionaries, the creators, the designers, and they built this enormous and wonderful testament to all of our wonderful vets. So with that, I'm very pleased to introduce right now the man who was working on it for all those years us watching us build it, and even before that, and that's Professor Richie White.
I want to thank all of you, especially the Board, for the resolution. It's a real great honor, and this is a really humbling experience. I don't think I really deserve any of this. We just kind of slogged along for a long time and finally got it done, you know? But I think, I'm hoping that, you know, maybe you'll thank me ten years down the line if it hangs together for that long, and, you know, I'm just humbled by it all, and I don't really, I really hope that it will do some good for the veterans and for our country in an indirect way, and serve as some kind of a focal point on this campus for veterans' affairs, and to try to help serve these people who are serving us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have a resolution for the Saddleback College Women's Tennis State Champions. Madam Clerk, if you'd read the resolution, and let's bring the team up here while she's doing that.
Yeah, this is a resolution for the women's tennis team, state champions, the Saddleback College Women's Tennis Team at Saddleback College, and it's a great honor for me to read this resolution as well. Whereas the 2010 Saddleback College Women's Tennis Team completed a triumphant season which included a perfect eight-to-zero record during Orange Empire Conference play and a stellar eighteen-to-zero overall record, included Orange Empire Conference, Southern California Regional, and State Champion titles, and whereas the eight members of the 2010 Saddleback College Women's Tennis Team combined to enroll in one hundred and twenty-five units during the fall 2009 semester, and had an overall team grade point average of three-point-two-oh, and therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the 2010 Saddleback College Women's Tennis Team members, Samin Aham Madania, Carissa Fleming, Brittany Hertel, Erika Kegawa, Clara Kearney, Michelle Novell, Carly Pletcher, and Avriel Tomiako, in addition to the head coach Jay Amos and assistant coach Chuck Konkey, for their astounding, for their outstanding athletic season and excellent representation of Saddleback College.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Shea.
Members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very honored and pleased to be up here for the second time this year for a state championship for Saddleback College. I'm even especially more excited that our women's tennis team are the state champions this year, and overwhelmingly the state champions, from what I hear and what I've seen. With that, I think we mostly could be even more proud is to see the enormous academic achievements of all of you that you've done, and frankly, in the end, that's probably the most important thing, is your success with your academics and your career, so just super congratulations. With that, I'm very pleased to introduce the head coach of the women's tennis team, Coach Jay Amos.
Very briefly, I'd like to thank everybody, thank the Board, I'd like to thank my players, and my assistant coach Chuck, and for sure, my athletic director, Tony LePold. He's very supportive, and he makes it very easy for me to run a top-notch program, and what Mr. Burnett said is, I believe we not only play good tennis, we represent the college in a really favorable manner. We are scholar slash athletes, and Chuck and I do that really big time. They have to do it right, we don't play. So, these girls did deserve all the credit, they're the ones who did it. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations to you.
And now, we have a resolution for Irvine Valley College, so I'd like to invite President Rockmore forward. Thank you.
And this is a resolution commemorating Irvine Valley College's twenty-fifth anniversary. Whereas Irvine Valley College has established the year 2010 to commemorate the twenty-fifth anniversary of its founding as an independent and accredited institution of higher learning, and as California's one hundred and fifth community college, and whereas Irvine Valley College has for twenty-five years been faithfully committed to its mission to provide lower-division transfer education, to provide vocational education, to provide support for regional economic development, to provide basic instruction in English as a second language, math and reading, and to provide community education for lifelong learners, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the outstanding leaders' scholarship performance and service to the community by Irvine Valley College, and for its dedication to student success.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student trustee Shea.
Well, I'd like to thank the Chancellor and the Board of Trustees for this recognition, hopefully you can hear through my cold here. It's wonderful that we're able to celebrate twenty-five years. Our Capstone event will be June the fourth, and I'm hearing that it's very close to selling out, so if you have an interest of being part of that celebration, now's the time to contact Altelo for that. The actual day is in October, and so we're going to have some other events that will occur at that time as well. So again, thank you all very much for this, appreciate it.
Thank you, and I better get my ticket right away, I don't want to be left without a ticket to the Capstone event.
All right, thank you all. At this point, we will go to public comments, so somebody else can speak, and we will start with Sam Devemia, and I apologize for messing up the name, but you join us at the podium, please, thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a student at Saddleback College, and I'm speaking in regards to prayer in school, and I firmly believe that prayer in school goes against what our founding fathers had in mind, namely the separation of church and state, as Thomas Jefferson once wrote, leaving with you that religion is a matter that lies solely between man and his God, that he owes account to none other for his faith or his worship, that the legitimate powers of government reach to actions only, and not to opinions. I contemplate with sovereign reverence that act of the whole American people which declare that their legislature should make no law respecting or an establishment of religion or prohibiting the exercise, free exercise thereof. The important point to be made here is that having a secular government does not mean a government against religion, but neutral to religion. We should not make any action that would exclude some people with different beliefs, but rather we should encompass all beliefs and be neutral when it comes to religion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Willis is up next, to be followed by Professor Cosgrove.
Mr. President, members of the Board, my name's Jeff Willis, I'm a resident of Mission Viejo, I've got five school-aged children, and about five weeks ago, I was home and I reviewed something called Measure D. I am a land use lawyer that's been working, reviewing ordinances for the last twenty-five years professionally, and when I read this thing, I realized it was one of the most undemocratic, destructive things I'd ever read. I went down to city council and sent my piece, and I sit here today because of that as the co-chair of the No on D Committee. In pertinent part, what Measure D does is, it requires something I've never seen before. To make any zone change in Mission Viejo, if this passes, will require a majority of the electorate, not a majority of those voting, but a majority of those eligible to vote in Mission Viejo would be required to vote for something. In effect, if less than half of the people show up, they're disenfranchised. Why does this matter to you? This matters to you because any change you make in your land use plan, any new buildings you want to put in, any athletic facilities you want to change, now has to go to a vote of the people, you have to get a majority, and by the way, you're going to pay the quarter of a million dollars it costs to run the election, out of taxpayer money. We have forward to do a resolution, I understand we're not on the agenda tonight, unfortunately, but I have a resolution here, I encourage there to be a discussion about this, because this is something that is probably the most destructive thing I've ever seen for Mission Viejo. A wide range of people are opposed to it, including the Taxpayers Association, Saddleback Valley Unified School District, the Board of Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce, just about every organized group out there is opposed to Measure D. Unfortunately, they did a really good job, the proponents of picking a name, they called it the Right to Vote, which is very Orwellian, because it's actually the opposite, it deprives you of your right to vote. So, I have a resolution here, I tender for consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and if you would give that to Board Secretary, and we will get copies disseminated, thank you. Up next is Professor Cosgrove to...
Say something.
To say something, well, I'm looking, my nose are messed. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Let me dial us.
I'd like to recognize Carmen Dominguez, the new president of the Academic Senate for 2010, 2011. And want to thank her for the work that she has done this year as president-elect. Also want to recognize the people in our accreditation team, because we're coming up next month to give a presentation to you regarding the progress of this, and of the number of years that I've worked on accreditation, I think this for Saddleback is one of the best reports we have ever crafted. Rajan is co-chair, and I want to thank him for the work that we've done together. Claire Cesario Silva is writing, has written our introduction, and can you just tinker with her a little bit? Dan Pestalazzi for standard one, Tony Tang for standard two, Carol Hilton for standard three, and Carmen for standard four. Joe Trinovia, one of our part-time faculty members, has taken on the enormous tasks of doing the technical editing of this document, so it's clean and clear and consistent. I appreciate the Board members, Lang and Wagner, for serving at the colleges on behalf of the accreditation issue, and I think that brings us closer together to your understanding some of our concerns at the college level. And I want to give special thanks to Tracy Daly, who has been an exemplary example of district leadership, and the work that she has done and the research that she has accomplished. Thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you. Up next is Donna Varner, but she's already spoken to us, and I don't see her, so I think that's a leftover sheet from earlier this afternoon. All right, Tony Morano, to be followed by Margot Lovett.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to the Board. I am a student here at Saddleback College, and have enjoyed very much my experience and education. I recently took some time off from my business to take some film classes here at Saddleback College. I competed in the video contest offered by the college, and was awarded second place for the promotional video that I did. Taking classes at Saddleback College has been an amazing experience for me. I am concerned, however, for the use of taxpayer money that's being spent on the lawsuit that challenges your practice of organized prayer at official school events. I understand that counseling services for the first three weeks of the summer session has been canceled due to lack of funds. These services are very much needed by the students, who've put their trust in the Board of this college to make proper decisions where funding is concerned. I'm sure you're aware of the February 21, 2006, the Dover Area School Board paid over a million dollars in legal fees and damages as a result in the verdict of the case dealing with intelligent design. The case was about Board members imposing their religious beliefs on the students of the school. The Dover School Board had been offered the opportunity to rescind its policy and avoid paying legal fees, but they declined. One of the attorneys commented on the cost of the trial. Any Board thinking of trying to do what the Dover Board did is going to have to look at a bill in excess of over two million dollars, and I think that two million dollars is a lot to explain to taxpayers for a lawsuit that should have never been fought. I see that on item 6.2, this Board is considering to set aside two million dollars of taxpayer money for the legal defense, so that members of this Board can impose their religious views on an unsuspecting public. I would ask that this Board please not spend any more of the taxpayer's money to defend your personal religious views. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Margot Lovett to be followed by Claire Cesario Silva.
My name is Margot Lovett, I am professor of history at Saddleback College, where I have taught since 1997. This is Claire Cesario Silva, who is professor of anthropology at Saddleback College, Carla Westfall, who is professor of mathematics at Saddleback College, and Roy Bauer, professor of English at Irvine Valley College, sorry, professor of philosophy at Irvine Valley College. We are four of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit challenging the Board of Trustees' ongoing practice of including prayer at official school event functions. We are here tonight with a joint statement from all five of the faculty plaintiffs and the two anonymous student plaintiffs in the case. We were very glad to learn that there was no prayer at the scholarship ceremony this year, and we ask that the Board make this an official and permanent decision by revising your policy on prayers. It is currently your policy, as per a resolution passed in December of 2009, to include prayers at, quote... As a result of this divisive and exclusionary practice, many former donors have withdrawn funds from the Saddleback College Foundation. These donors are unlikely to return until it is clear that your policy and practice have changed permanently. We were also distressed that, once again, there was a prayer included at commencement. This time, the prayer was delivered by trustee Padberg. During the prayer, numerous faculty members, in addition to those of us who are plaintiffs in this case, held up signs in protest. The signs said, "Respect everyone's beliefs. Respect all beliefs. Separate church and state, and we are a diverse community." We were thanked for doing this by students and staff members, who often do not feel comfortable speaking up for themselves for fear of retaliation. In many ways, our actions were to let them know that we know that they too are part of this community and that this is their community college regardless of their religious beliefs. We wish that this message of inclusiveness would come from you as well.
Finally, we recently learned that under Item 6.2 on tonight's agenda, the Board is considering setting aside $2 million for legal defense of the prayer practice. As you well know, this money would be for legal fees, as we are only seeking nominal damages in the amount of $1. Spending $2 million on unnecessary litigation would be an irresponsible use of taxpayer funds in the best of times. Coming right after the decision to cancel counseling services at Saddleback College for the first three weeks of the summer session, a decision made due to budget cuts, this is indefensible. There is an easy solution to all of this. Replace the prayers with a moment of silence, as has been proposed by both Saddleback College's Associated Student Government and Academic Senate. By doing so, you will not only show your respect for all in our community, but you will be able to end this unnecessary and expensive litigation. Then you can spend taxpayer dollars where they should be spent, on educating and supporting our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to board reports, and let's start with trustee Jane.
Several things. First off, I'd like to congratulate Dixie Bullock, who has been named as the interim chancellor. She's held on every position in the district. Dixie, we really welcome you and look forward to working with you. Secondly, I'd like to say thanks again to all of those who were involved in the Veterans' Memorial, all the participants, but especially to those who spent years and years working on the Veterans' Memorial. It's a very impressive structure. Couple other things. Both graduation ceremonies on Friday were perfect. They were very well done. The students, of course, were the focus and the most important part of the whole celebration. However, I don't want to for a second forget the people who worked for weeks and months to make those graduation ceremonies impressive. Thanks again to the tennis team at Saddleback for winning another state championship. Congratulations to IVC on its 25th anniversary. And congratulations to Carmen Dominguez. It's good to have you back in the front row again. We miss you. It's been a year or two since you've been here. Welcome back.
Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. Well, as you can well imagine, this is a very busy time of the year for the board members, the last month of the academic year. A week ago last Friday, I was invited to an event I attended a week ago last Friday by Professor Bill Hewitt. It was the Disabled Students Programs and Services and Extended Opportunity Programs and Services, get that right, at Irvine Valley College. This is the Counseling Centers Program, and the recognition was for some of the most challenged students economically and physically at Irvine Valley College. And it was a wonderful program. The students all received certificates. A number of them received associate degrees the following week. But I was co-EMC of the event, or master of ceremony event, with President Glenn Rockmore. It was a wonderful event, and Bill, thanks again for inviting me. I enjoyed it. I think I shook hands with over 150 students. And it was an absolute pleasure, again, to attend both college graduation ceremonies last Friday, Presidents Burnett and Rockmore. The programs were flawless. It was well organized. I think the students had a wonderful time. And as a trustee, I very much enjoyed attending. Thank you.
Thank you. I too enjoyed attending the two graduations, one at Saddleback and one at Irvine Valley College. They were wonderful celebrations and certainly a celebration of all that we do as trustees to help our students move forward and graduate. Wonderful time of the year. I also attended the Human Services graduation, and that was a very, I attend that every year. It's a very touching graduation because many of the graduates were drug addicts or alcoholics, and they had turned their life around, and they're getting certificates or degrees in order to help other people cure themselves of these addictions. So it was incredibly touching. I also attended the retirement parties of Mary Williams, Kathy Constance, and Craig Grossman. So many of our newly hired staff are moving on. I also want to give a very hearty congratulations to the Saddleback College Nursing Program. The Saddleback College Nursing Program ranks first in the country in students to pass the nursing exam. So they came out number one over 92 associate degree programs in the state, number one out of 584 associate degree nursing programs in the nation, and number one out of 972 of all nursing programs in the nation. And this is an incredible accomplishment. And I would like to propose a resolution at the next board meeting to congratulate our nursing department for this incredible success story. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Dixie Bullock as our new interim chancellor. And I just want to say, I'll echo what my former trustees have said, in terms of congratulations, the dedication of the Veterans' Memorial at Saddleback was incredibly touching. And what a beautiful piece for a memorial. So I'm very, very proud of that. I did attend our two college graduations and found them very interesting. The girls outperformed in terms of numbers the boys in both campuses. Saddleback was a little bit higher than IVC. And we have just wonderful programs. Two state champions at Saddleback, the nursing program, Irvine Valley's 25th anniversary. It's just, you're so proud this time of year. It's just a wonderful time of year, so we really appreciate that. And I wonder if I could just take a moment while I have the mic, if our new student trustee has her family here, you'd like to introduce them? Are they here? Okay. Could you do that for us? Maybe you planned to get to that. But...
Put your mic on.
Turn your mic on. There we go.
That's my mother right there. Her name's Julie. And that's my father, Charlie. And that's my little brother, Jason.
Eve, welcome. Congratulations on wonderful graduations. And given the nature of my voice at this point, I'm done. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add my congratulations to all of the new graduates who were recognized in recent days on both campuses. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to our new interim chancellor, Dixie Bullock. Be a pleasure to work with Dixie as we have worked so long before. Want to welcome Eve. Congratulations on your new post. It was indeed a magnificent day at Saddleback College for the Veterans' Memorial dedication. It was a moving day of prayer and of patriotism, and I think it was something we can all be proud of. I should like to recognize that we had a wonderful event from the South Orange County community, as well as from community leadership throughout higher education through all of Orange County this past week at the Bell Boll Bay Club, saluting the rich career of leadership in higher education of Chancellor Mather. I congratulate you on that very pleasant evening. To all here and to all who can hear my voice, I want to encourage you to vote on June 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, as you can tell, it's been a very busy period for all of us recently, and I will also add my congratulations to interim chancellor Dixie Bullock, and also to my fellow and newest student trustee, Eve. Welcome aboard. I know it's going to be a successful year for you. I unfortunately was not able to make the Veterans' Memorial dedication recently, but I had a great excuse. I was back in Washington, DC for another organizational function back there and introducing our Congressman Ed Royce at a dinner at the very time we were holding that dedication. I've since visited the memorial, though, and both actually during the day and at night. And as Marcia mentioned, it is a magnificent sight during the evening. It's a great addition to this fine campus and certainly a fitting tribute to all our veterans. I also attended the nurses' pinning ceremony and represented the Board at that function, both commencements, as we mentioned earlier, the Saddleback Community College Scholarship Awards Ceremony, and Mary Williams' retirement party, along with too many other functions throughout the county to mention. Particularly meaningful, and Tom just got, trustee Fuentes just got through mentioning this, was the chancellor's retirement party at the Bell Boll Bay Club. And I thank you for hosting and emceeing that event, trustee Fuentes. It was great seeing many of our past board members, as well as leaders throughout the community, to honor our own chancellor, Raghu Mather, on all of his incredible contributions and accomplishments over the years. Thank you.
Trustee Shea.
Well, my first board report. I recently attended IVC's graduation, and I thought everything went very smoothly, and I thought every speech was really great. I also wanted to thank everybody again for having me on the Board, and I hope that we can have a fun year this year, as well as get a lot of things accomplished. That's it.
Thank you. Chancellor Mather.
I would just like to welcome Eve as the newest student trustee. All of our work is all about students, so it is especially heartwarming for me to welcome a newest student trustee. I've worked with many of them, and I had an opportunity to sit down with Eve and talk about her aspirations and plans on behalf of these students. And I got to tell you, she is one heck of a person, extremely bright, extremely intelligent, and I know that she will do an outstanding job representing these students of this district. Welcome, Eve.
Thank you. Are there any board requests for reports? And then in writing, anything orally to throw into the mix? Very well, we are at Item 4.1, which is the discussion item. And let me begin with trustee Padberg.
Yes, President Wagner. This is a very important item. I've received a lot of material from Bob Cosgrove, as well as others. I do believe that it's premature, since we just appointed our interim chancellor. I would like to table this item.
Congratulations.
Yes, I'd like to table this item for until the July meeting, and that's my motion at this time.
I second that motion.
It's a non-debatable motion. The motion is to table the board report with respect to ATAP. Let's vote on the motion to table. And the motion to table passes on a five to two vote with an advisory yes vote. We are to the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that trustees would like to pull? Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I'd like to pull Item 5.15, which is the ATAP mission. I believe that should come back when we do our discussion in July. Thank you.
Any other items to pull from the...
I'm sorry, maybe I need to make a motion to table that.
When we pull it, we'll pull it. We're pulling it right now. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I would like to pull Items 5.2, 5.4, and 5.18, all for purposes of abstaining.
5.2, 5...
4 and 5.18.
Move the balance.
All right. Seeing no other requests, the balance has been moved. Moved and seconded by trustee Padberg. Let's vote on the balance. Trustee Williams, please, and trustee Shea. Thank you. And the balance carries unanimously. 5.2 has been pulled by trustee Lang for purposes of abstaining any discussion on the item.
Move the vote.
It's moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Yeah.
And the matter carries with one abstention. And same with respect to 5.4. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And trustee Lang, any further discussion from anyone? All right, let's vote on 5.4. And that matter carries unanimously with one abstention. 5.15, trustee Padberg.
Yeah, I asked that this item be pulled, and I believe that it ought to come back to us when we have our discussion in July. So it's the mission for ATAP. I think it's more appropriate then.
Is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table it until the July meeting.
I'll second that.
Second. Further discussion on that? All right, let's vote on tabling Item 5.15 to the July meeting. Matter carries with one no vote. And finally, we're at 5.18, pulled by trustee Lang, again for purposes of abstaining any further discussion. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion seen, then let's vote.
Matter carries with one abstention.
Wow, you guys are making this easy. We are going, we are at Item 6.1.
Move it.
That's a motion to approve by trustee Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.2 is here for approval?
I...
Yes, ma'am.
I request to have this item divided and have the legal defense voted on separately after the other items are voted on.
All right, is there a second to dividing the question?
Second.
And moved and seconded, and I don't think we need to vote on that. I mean, it's an easily divided issue, and under Robert's rules, we can just do it. So we will vote with respect to everything but that item first. Discussion on the balance of Item 6.2. All right, is there a motion with respect to the balance of 6.2?
Move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, no discussion. Let's go ahead and vote on the balance.
Balance.
All right, trustee Milchiker has removed the legal defense portion of Item 6.2. Is there a...
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I pulled this item in order to vote against it because I just cannot see spending $2 million of our money and taxpayers' money on this particular item right now when there are so many incredible needs in the district. Right now, we actually have canceled our counseling for the first three months of the summer. We've cut way back on our disabled students programs, which we need for our veterans. And I attended a retirement party of Kathy Constance, who is working on helping all of our students that are now taking online classes. And this is an incredible need to have classified positions to help our students that are taking online classes, and that position's not going to be replaced because of lack of funding. So we haven't increased these positions, and we're not going to. And there's so many other needs in the district for students, to help students. So I'm going to vote against this item for that reason.
Trustee Padberg.
I just want to clarify that, although it doesn't really spell it out in the item, this is not necessarily to spend $2 million. It's to set it aside. We can still make a decision in the next few months how we use that allocated and set-aside money.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm going to approach it from a little different standpoint. While I, you know, have some certainly sympathies for trustee Milchiker's argument as a fiscal conservative, I frankly do find it somewhat disingenuous that the very folks that are speaking out about spending the money on this item are the same folks that are causing us to incur this amount of expense for the district. And I'm going to... And I'm going to support the motion to set aside those funds.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just think that as trustees, our mission is to conserve the resources of the district and to make sure that our resources are spent in the best way to serve students possible. And I think if we set aside $2 million for the attorneys to spend, they will spend it. So that's why I'm voting against this. I think there are other needs that are much more important than this at this particular time.
Trustee Fuentes.
It's my intent to support the setting aside of these funds. I think it is the only responsible action that this board can take to be prepared. I believe that our district will win this case. I hope that we pursue it with all aggressive action that we can take, and I hope that we can go after those who have caused the district to spend this money and win the repayment of these attorney fees.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. And the matter carries with one no vote. Item 6.3 is here for approval. It is with respect to the hiring of consultant for the district educational facilities master plan. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, and discussion on the item. Seeing none, we vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.4 is here for review and study only, and this has to do with the district mission and vision statements. I'll entertain a motion to approve, to accept for review and study. The motion is to accept for review and study. Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, let's vote. Item 6.5, matter carries unanimously. Item 6.5 is here for approval. This is to consolidate elections for members of the governing board. Moved and seconded, trustee Lang.
I needed to, on 6.3, and I'm hoping that the board will indulge me on this. I intended to abstain on this, on that item, and I was hoping to record my, re-record my vote as an abstention on that item.
Mr. President, as a voting member of the majority, I move to reconsider.
And I will second that motion to reconsider. Let's go back and reconsider item 6.3 for purposes of trustee Lang abstaining. Wait a minute, let's vote to reconsider the item first. All in favor of reconsidering the item, vote yes. All opposed, vote no. Trustee, thank you. All right, the matter is going to be reconsidered. We are on item 6.3 for purposes of abstention. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved and seconded again, and seeing no further discussion, let's vote. And the matter carries with one abstention. All right, we, we were on 6.5, and I do believe there was a motion to approve, but since we're a little out of order, let me get another motion for the record.
I move.
Moved and seconded by trustees Padberg and Williams, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. We are here on 6.6 for discussion and/or approval. These are some board policies. I'll entertain a motion to do what? Discuss or approve?
Discuss.
Just to discuss, not for approval. All right? That seems to die for lack of a second.
All right.
All right, for discussion only, not for approval. All right? So who wants to talk about them? Oh, trustee Padberg.
I just want to be sure that our shared governance people have had ample opportunity to participate in this, and I'd like to hear from them.
Well, let's start with the deputy chancellor who chairs the committee, and then we'll move down to shared governance.
Yes, the answer to your question is yes. The academic senate at both colleges have had a chance to review and approve these policies. They can speak for themselves.
What about the students? Do we have someone from them?
We have no one here from the student body. We do have, of course, a student trustee who can weigh in if she would like. And let me turn it to the academic senate presidents. Are they good with this item?
Yes, sir.
All right. No objection from the student quarter that I can see?
No objection.
Okay. All right, well, it was here for discussion. Anyone want to amend the motion for approval? As the maker of the motion, you can amend it, and the maker of the second is accepting the amendment, so we are now here for approval. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote. And that carries unanimously. 6.7 is here for review and study only. I'll entertain it. Trustee Williams, is there a second? And trustee Jay's second? Discussion of these items. Seeing none, let's vote to accept for review and study. And the matter carries unanimously. 6.8 is here for approval or ratification of academic personnel action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Trust, vice chancellor Bouguet.
There is one change, a name change to item A2A. The person's name is changed from Devon Mohammed now, and that would apply also to the resume towards the back. So from Devon Bradley to Devon Mohammed.
Those typos, yeah.
She changed her name between the application.
Very good. Not a problem, as far as I'm concerned. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I wanted some discussion regarding the manner in which the additional compensation has been determined for basically all the items in C. And let me just see if that's, yes, okay, we can start with that, please.
These items are submitted by the colleges to the Office of Human Resources and the chancellor for review and approval, and they come before you after that process has been done. Generally, there are four stipends that relate to specific areas on both colleges. And you'll see in the center column, those activities are listed there. So there's a variety of them, and they come basically after a formal review by each college individually. And I could answer them on a general basis, and probably specifically too, if you choose. The presidents are probably better suited to describe the actual specific activity at their colleges.
Is there any effort made, and, you know, I guess I'll direct it to all three, to reach any sort of, making certain we're essentially compensating people for like duties in similar manners at both colleges?
I'll let the president speak to that.
Trustee Lang, I understand your question of being between the two colleges. I guess it depends. I think it depends on the particular item itself. Sometimes yes, sometimes no. I would say that actually a lot of it is done more by, because it's a similar amount of work, and it's a comparison, but it's not an actual direct comparison between the two.
Okay, and I guess my response to that is then should there be some sort of equivalency, if you will, or some uniformity in terms of that process?
Well, I think that for some of the positions, it actually is time and service that they'll have the opportunity to move up in pay scale. So that may not pace with what the other college is doing in that case. And that really would make up the bulk of what you're seeing here, I believe. We are making efforts now to try to coordinate in other areas, so, like academic chairs, for example.
Let me think about that one for a minute. I'll let somebody else take a turn here.
There's nobody else that wants to take a turn? No, it's not, well, you remember, you got to turn your microphone off, or else it won't show up here. Trustee Fuentes.
President Rockmore, I see on exhibit A, page 39, the largest number that stands out here is some $20,000 for coordinator of academic programs, IVC, and co-chair accreditation, IVC. I'm having trouble finding a similar position at Saddleback. Maybe President Burnett can help me there.
Just as my understanding is, we have several people that are doing that amount of work, whereas I believe at IVC, they have one person that actually is doing the bulk of the work. So Saddleback College, basically, because of our process, that's just the way we've organized and divided up. So if you actually add up the various stipends and time of various faculty members, it actually may add up. And I haven't done that real quick, but it may actually add up.
I have, it's about $1,000 off.
Well, thank you very much.
Between the two. I'm not saying you'll have to add it up yourself. It's about $1,000.
How would one add that up? How would one?
What I did is look at all the positions that relate to accreditation and the stipend amounts, and put a column for IVC and a column for Saddleback.
Right, and also, it may impact that Saddleback is actually one month, my understanding, about four weeks ahead in our process, and we were starting earlier. So maybe you can't even compare this semester to the prior semester. That helps a little bit, too. If you want to get information, we could actually give you an actual number at the next meeting, or give it to you on the side, all of our stipends that we give for accreditation for our faculty.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.9 is here for approval ratification, and this is classified personnel action items. Are there any amendments?
No, sir.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Trustee Lang.
Yes.
Microphone, please.
Thank you. I guess the one item that I am going to ask to pull, to obtain some additional information on, will be A1A, and I'd like to separate that from the rest of the items.
Okay, and again, that's easy, relatively ministerial, and I think under the rules, we can do that without a separate vote. So we will consider item A1A separately. Any further discussion or issues with respect to the balance of the item?
I'll move the balance.
All right, moved and seconded, as to the balance of the item, and let's vote on the balance. A1A is exempted otherwise, the others, otherwise the others are approved unanimously. Now, with respect to one, item A1A, what is the board's pleasure? I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
The item has been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded by trustees Padberg and Milchiker. Further discussion on item A1A. Trustee Padberg.
I would like for this item to be presented by President Burnett, because obviously, this is the wife of our vice chancellor of human resources. So I think it's more appropriate to have President Burnett present this item, as well as the recruitment process, and whether there was a arms-length transaction with this.
Sir?
Yes, trustee Padberg, this process was done completely under the policies and guidelines of our district. There was, I even investigated myself, that there was no undue influence whatsoever by anybody, let alone the husband of this candidate. The department, I'm sorry, the division dean actually sat on the committee. This actually is an assistant that we were reporting to, the dean of fine arts, and was a unanimous decision with the committee, my understanding overwhelmingly, that she was the best candidate.
Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
My motion is going to be that I need a little bit further time to contemplate this, so I'd like to pull this item for consideration at the next meeting.
Is that a motion to table, which is a?
Motion to table, thank you.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
All right, the motion to table is made, it is proper, it is not debatable. Let's vote on the motion to table. And the motion to table is defeated on a five to two vote with an advisory yes vote by the student trustee. Trustee, you don't have the floor any longer. If you want it, push it back again, trustee Williams.
Well, I wish I could have asked this question before. Has this employee started work yet?
Yes.
The answer is yes. So you can't not take action if the employee is going to continue working beyond tonight, correct? We give authority to the presidents to hire people, and then we follow the recommendation and approve it. So this puts us in a very difficult situation, where the employee has already started. We've heard from the president that the process was proper, so it's difficult, if we table the item, would we take the employee off the payroll? Is that what would have happened?
The motion to table has been defeated.
Well?
It's now, well?
The employee has already started work.
It's an issue of now, are you going to approve or not the motion, or make another motion to table, or whatever?
I'm going to follow the recommendation.
All right, trustee Padberg.
Yes, I just want to say that if there's any concern about nepotism and our nepotism policy, this is clearly within the guidelines. This person will not have any reporting to the vice chancellor of human resources at the district level. There will be several levels before they even report to the college president. So I'm completely comfortable with this, and of course intend to support it, because I made a motion, and I assume the motion is still good and ready for vote.
Motion's on the table. All right, further discussion on the item. Trustee Fuentes.
I think that it's unfortunate that we receive personnel appointments when somebody has already begun working. That's a general comment for now and for the future, and perhaps our system needs to be looked at. In effect, to me, seems like the board's action is inconsequential if people are put to work when the approval of that is brought to the board after the fact. Later in today's agenda, we will have presented to the board a report on the issue of family hiring, of nepotism in our district. When I requested that report for the purpose of reviewing what has been a long existing situation of numerous family ties within our district, I think the board has an obligation to our community, especially in these times of high unemployment, to have the most open hiring process possible. And it is troubling to me that family hiring continues. I have all due respect for this employee, her talents and skills. I think, though, that in a public forum, we need to avoid the perception of a situation as much as the reality it carries with the electorate and with our community significance. I think that it is very unfortunate that we're put into a box to have to take action without the opportunity to review, one, the report that is about to come to us, two, that the employee is already on payroll. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Mathur.
I know that over the years, the board has been very concerned about hiring of relatives. I know that over the years, the board has been very concerned about hiring of relatives. As long as the process is clean, the person, people can be hired. However, upon further reflection, I find that though there is an appearance that the process may be clean in this case, I'm aware of two other instances, one prior to this hiring and one since this person has started. And I'm aware of instances where some top-level administrators and managers of this district have reported to me some impropriety by the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. Therefore, it is important that the board consider the totality of the picture, or you will continue to be fooled in the future. Thank you.
Fooled by who?
Those who try such influences.
Just so we're clear, are you contending we are being fooled by the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources? Is that your allegation?
Stand by the comment I have made.
I was asking for clarification of the comment you made. Are you accusing the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources of any impropriety here in an open board session?
I stand by the comment I have made.
Are you going to answer my question?
I stand by the comment I have made.
Trustee Milchiker.
I was just going to ask Chancellor Mather that he's the one that put this item on the agenda and forwarded it to the board for approval. And suddenly tonight, when we come to the meeting, we find out that he's changed his mind, and he's against the item that he himself put on the agenda for approval. And I'm just very surprised why our chancellor would put forth an item for approval and then that the evening of when it is to be approved, you change your mind and at the very 11th hour, something that you have approved in the past.
I'll be happy to respond to that. I'm glad you bring that up. The role of the chancellor has been diminished in the last some months in this district. If the chancellor raises questions about the recommendations of the college dean or the vice president or the president, chancellor is considered to be micromanaging them. So as I'm leaving, I just started approving things that the college presidents recommend. In this case, it was recommended by the college president. It was signed out by the dean and the vice president. I say, hey, go for it. Same thing about these stipends and compensations. The chancellor's role has been diminished. I recommend that the board have a good discussion about the role of the chancellor in the future, or the board will confuse the heck out of the new chancellor.
Further discussion? All right. The matter is before us for approval. Let's vote. Trustee Lang, please. And the matter carries with one no vote. We are at item 6.10, which is the district's initial proposal to the Faculty Association. It's here for review and study. Is there a second? Discussion on the item. Seeing no discussion, let's vote on the item for review and study. And the matter carries unanimously. Item 611 is here for review and study, and this is the initial proposal from the Police Officers Association. And the item's been moved by trustee Padberg. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Williams. And as an aside, trustee Lang, Padberg, and I ran into the head of the union, Officer Garcia, at graduation. His daughter graduated, and he is rightfully quite proud of her, so I thought I would note that for the record. All right. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. We are at item 7.1, which is the report with respect to the hiring of relatives. And I suppose I should turn this over to the chancellor.
Well, this report is being provided per board request, unless board has any questions or comments.
All right. And trustee Milchiker.
I make a motion to table this item because I don't want to embarrass any of the fine people that work at the district right now.
The motion to table has been seconded. It is a non-debatable item. Let me ask, before we get into it, is it the findings of HR that there are any examples of nepotism out there or potential employees who would be, in HR's view, embarrassed by this report?
We have gone through and reviewed the policies. We have had two instances where there was, one case, potential nepotism and working with the college president, and she repaired that, and it did not happen. One other case we did have in the last year, and once we found out about it, we worked with the college president, took very quick corrective action, and actually did some other action with the administrator involved in it, and that's been resolved. But other than those two instances, there's not been any reported nepotism whatsoever in the district.
I very much share trustee Milchiker's concerns for unfairly embarrassing any particular employees. And so my question, to help me voting on this motion, is, do you see that potential with respect to the report you're going to give tonight?
No, I don't. What's your question again?
My question is, do you see the potential for embarrassment of any employees that rightly concerns trustee Padberg, Milchiker, and Padberg, who made and seconded the motions? And those concerns are good ones. We don't want to do that. Are we likely to do that with the report you've got?
There's two parts to the report. I have a PowerPoint presentation that talks about the different policies. But I've also been asked by one of the members of the trustees to actually go through and read the names of all the employees involved. The PowerPoint presentation, I do not see any problem at all with presenting that to the board, and it would not cause any embarrassment to any employees.
All right.
The second part might possibly do that.
All right. Let me then ask whether trustee Milchiker would be willing to hold off on her motion so we can get the PowerPoint out of the way and then consider it again.
Yes, I'd be very happy to hold off on my motion until we have the PowerPoint presentation because I think I would be willing to do that. Thank you.
I very much appreciate that consideration. I also have several other trustees wishing to speak at this point. Trustee Williams?
Well, I think it's premature because I heard PowerPoint, so I think I'll pull that question.
Okay, very good.
For city presentation?
No? And trustee Jay.
Oh, wait. I have a question.
Oh, you do have a question. I'm sorry. I thought you said-
I was ahead of you.
Trustee Padberg is first, and then trustee Jay.
I'm just curious about the two instances where you did find the nepotism. If you found those before this request for report was done or after you did the report?
Well before.
Okay, thank you. That's important.
Trustee Jay.
Yeah. My impression is, this is a big organization, 25, 2,600 employees, that of course, there's a lot of situations where relatives are handled. David, would you comment to us in public agencies? Isn't there a federal law that says that you cannot discriminate against two employees because they're related in terms of further employment of one of them?
Yes. There's actually several laws that pertain to it, but specifically, our board policy actually pertains to that as well. We were not allowed to discriminate against people. We're supposed to focus on the best employees possible, and occasionally, they do happen to be relatives.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Carry on.
Okay. I have a report on the employment of relatives. First of all, I'm going to cover a couple of points. What is the definition of nepotism? The protection that we put in place against nepotism? Talk about employment of relatives. Talk about the actions, and then a summary as well. Nepotism, in the Merriam-Webster dictionary, defines nepotism as favoritism, as an appointment to a job based on kinship. And so in that case, we have to watch for that. Also, there may be other ramifications, too, and different definitions of nepotism, but in the aspect of, do you have an undue influence in the ongoing work that might happen as well? But in this case, our protection against nepotism, we have a very thorough system of policies in place that do the best to protect. Is it possible for nepotism to creep into the system? The answer is yes, because we do rely on self-reporting. But part of that, too, is the fact that we listen carefully, we monitor as much as possible, and you'll see as we go through the presentation how we do that. Board Policy 4011.2 really focuses on confidentiality and conflict of interest in hiring. It precludes any relative of an applicant from participation in the selection process, which is critical. So in other words, a relative cannot sit on the search committee. It requires every person in the hiring committee to disclose any family relationship to the applicant. It also includes the aspect of living together and so on. One advantage that we did by doing this report is that we actually improved our application process by changing the wording to make certain that if somebody lives with somebody in the same domicile, that they have to report that as to in the application process. So actually, compiling this report actually was very helpful to us as a district. The third thing on this board policy 4011.2 is that all hiring committees have to sign that they're free of any conflicts of interest. So we have documentation. We ask the question formally. We get a formal response as to whether or not there's any relationship. Every application asks the question, do you have any relatives? And this is what we added, once we did the report, in the parentheses part, or anyone who resides in your home, currently employed at the district. Now, this is self-reporting, but if you report falsely, it's cause for termination. So somebody might slip by, but if we ever do find it, we have the ability to go back and terminate. So that's the best possible, unless we resort to DNA testing. I'm not quite certain how you're going to do anything other than the aspect of asking the question. The Office of Human Resources with the colleges rigorously enforces policies and closely monitors the hiring process. We review each application, and we check to make certain that there's nothing involved in the process that could possibly constitute as nepotism. Probably one of the key things, and this relates back to a question by our trustee, is that this is language right out of Board Policy 4003. The district does not prohibit the employment of relatives or domestic partners as defined by Family Code Section 297, in the same department or division or school, with the exception that they shall not be assigned to a regular position within the same department, division, school, or site that has an immediate family member who is in a position to recommend or influence personnel decisions. That's probably the crux of what we have. So can we discriminate against relatives and employees in the hiring process? The answer is no. We have to consider them, and there's this whole series of different codes that pertain to this as well. And then actions taken. I mentioned this previously. You'll see, we had the situation that would occur at one of our colleges. We heard about it. We worked very quickly with the college president. And actually, the college president actually is the one that brought it forward to us in that aspect of it. So we changed the reporting structure. We took care of that to make certain that we did not have some reporting to a relative. Number two, we did have a conflict, and we went through, resolved the conflict by an immediate change as soon as we found it, and we took appropriate action with the administrator. And that administrator is not an administrator at this time. So we were quick, and we moved fast to make certain the problem was resolved, with working closely with the college and that. If you look at this, this is an important slide. I think if you ask the question is, do we have a problem with people being hired that are relatives? Well, we have 1.7% of permanent employees are relatives. That means that 98.3% are not. We do not have a problem with this. Statistically, that's a very small number. We do have, you'll see, the 2.2%. We have a large amount of seasonal employees and temporary employees that come through the system. So we do have that, and that number fluctuates literally from month to month. You'll see on the board agenda tonight, there's a large number of people that we approved as temporary, but a lot of that is for summer projects. You'll see those kind of positions flex. So right now, at the report that you have before you, it's dated for April 31st. So effective April 31st, you have five pages of permanent employees. You have, excuse me, temporary employees and two pages of permanent employees. So in summary, we have a system of policies and procedures that are rigorously enforced. We work hand-in-hand with the colleges to make certain that if there are issues involved, that we actively enforce them with them. So I'm willing to take any questions?
Questions from any of my colleagues? Seeing none? Oh, trustee Williams.
Vice Chancellor, I know the district is a significant employer, at least in the southern half of Orange County. How many employees, again, do we have total, including the part-time and full-time? Faculty, close to 3,000?
As of last week, Monday, we had 3,033. That changes on the day, but we're just over 3,000.
Okay, that's pretty significant. I recall seeing that Disneyland, UC Irvine, and the county of Orange are the three largest, but that's still a pretty significant number. Thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
I believe that we need to be careful about what we brush aside as minor. That's a rather subjective opinion. 1%, 2.2%. What I have here is seven single-spaced pages of family member employment. I think that this issue needs to be constantly on our mind. I think that it needs to be forward and present. I do not think it is a pattern that we can brush aside and say we're doing a great job because we have 98% of non-family members employed. Family employment causes potential for problems. Any professional in Human Resources will tell you that. I appreciate the presentation of this report. I appreciate that we have paused to look at it at my request. I was not looking for a name-by-name recital, but rather numeric presentation, which is provided here. And I think that numeric presentation is serious. I think also, though, that we should all be reminded that when one works for government institutions, the names of the employees and the salary levels are public information. So for those who are concerned about embarrassing somebody, that's a rather unfounded embarrassment. We're talking about public information. Thank you very much for the report.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just wanted to ask, my understanding is that the vast majority, or certainly a big percentage of these, are people that actually met while they were employed, and then they subsequently got married? Or is that true, or is there any?
That's an issue I'm not going to discuss, please.
Okay.
Literally, people, when you spend hours and hours of your life, the majority of your life at work, and you're single and you're looking, then those things happen. And hopefully, that it doesn't interfere with their duties.
Okay. But I do agree that they should not be reporting directly to someone that is related in any way to them.
Absolutely.
Trustee Padberg.
Thank you for the report. I do think it's an important report, and I thank trustee Fuentes for asking for it. I want to point out to all of our trustees and to the public, these agendas are online. You can review them. You can look at the names. You can look at every single thing. But in what we approved tonight, 6.9 was approval of hiring of classified personnel. And on page 12 of Exhibit A, there are three items of relatives that are hired. It's disclosed at the bottom who they're related to. Their pay is disclosed. We have been doing this for years. So there is complete public disclosure to the trustees, to the public on an ongoing and regular basis. And I'm perfectly comfortable with our policy on nepotism and how we're enforcing it. I'll call the question. Oh, we don't have a vote. Sorry. There's no votes.
All right. Further discussion? Seeing none? Thank you, sir, for that report. 7.2 is an information item with respect to college speakers. Any questions? 7.3 is our monthly basic aid report.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If we could pause for a moment on 7.2. Are these not coming to us again after the fact? Didn't we speak to this and take some action to seek names of speakers before they speak, not after the fact?
You are correct.
I'm looking at dates of 4/15/10, 4/26/10, 5/4/10.
We have indeed asked that this- We have indeed asked that this stuff come to us in advance in the past. Is there a reason it didn't? It's not here for approval, but...
Yeah, I believe for college speakers, the board shouldn't be in the position of choosing who can speak or who cannot, but the compensation does come to the board before any compensation is awarded to the speaker.
Well, but the issue is perhaps there is a speaker out there that the board is sensitive to and is willing to run the risk of incurring the displeasure of whichever group would be displeased, but to otherwise take action to spare the college or the district the embarrassment of that particular speaker. Not that I can think of one, but I think that was one of the reasons we wanted to have advanced knowledge of this. And also, it's true that compensation doesn't get paid until we authorize it, but if the speaker's already spoken, they're entitled to the compensation. You're shaking your head.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Gary or somebody, it's my understanding all contracts say that they must be until they're paid, have to be approved by the board. So if a speaker does speak beforehand, they are taking the risk. That's my understanding. Gary, am I wrong?
Okay, well, good. Then only my first concern remains on the table.
Well, and to the first point, I definitely see that. However, I recall that we had some sort of legal weigh-in on that, and that's the way it turned out, the way it is. It's been a couple of years, I think, that we last visited this.
I just wanted to add, just from a logistic perspective, you have one board meeting a month. Many of these speakers come within two weeks, or the logistics where it just makes it almost impossible. I do think it would be a tremendous loss for our colleges if we had to not have speakers come on because we were not able to make the particular logistic timeframe of a board meeting, even though I do understand that we would like to have, and that's why we do bring it to the board, to at least have input or to see which speakers are coming.
Further discussion? And 7.3, the basic aid report, any discussion on it? 7.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.5, Here for Information, List of Board Requested Reports. 7.6, Our Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.7, The Quarterly Investment Report Discussion. All right, we are to the written, well, oral reports section, no matter what the agenda says. Let's start with President Burnett.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, I wanted to thank the trustees that were able to make commencement and our scholarship ceremony and all the other events that we had for the end of the semester. They were all very successful, and we're very proud of all our faculty, staff, and administrators. So thank you for joining us. Number two, I put down there, we're very proud, the annual Orange Appeal magazine. I left one for each of you. It's all student-written and run. It's on your seats right there, along with, have to admit, have to say that I gave you a copy. This is worth, this is hard to find, an actual copy of the front page of the Orange County Register, which reported our Veterans Memorial Dedication. It is my understanding that Saddleback College has only been on the front page of the Orange County Register twice in its history. This is one. The first time was actually the Ronald Reagan, when he came to the campus and dedicated it back in 1967. I hope I have that right. With that said, I just want to make one plug. KSBR Birthday Bash is coming up. It's going to be on Sunday, May 30th, at Lisa Oso Viejo Park. It's actually a fantastic event, so I'd encourage you and your friends to come.
Thank you, trustee Pabber.
I just wanted to make a comment about your pointing out the Register. Of course, I saw that and appreciate their front page coverage of the dedication. I do think, however, they got the figures of attendees wrong. I think they said about 5,000, and we had 500, and we had 1,000.
Oh, we had well over 1,000, yeah.
Thank you.
We had 800 just seating.
I just wanted to make that clear, yes.
We're about 200 people standing, so thank you, trustee Pabber. That's correct.
Professor Rockmore.
And I would like to ask that my written report stands. It'd be very hard to understand if I were to try to give it. Thank you.
Professor Spies.
My voice is going. Well, I too enjoyed the celebrations at both graduation events and was pleased to be there and congratulate the presidents and their staffs for running those so well. I just wanted to quickly, just to let you know, that I squeezed in one more event this last Friday. I actually attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony of the new transportation center at Cerritos College. That was my project before I left there. And you might have seen it actually on ABC TV, Channel 7, Friday night it aired. And I share this tonight because this is a community college facility that's now home to a four-year university, corporate partners, plural, includes classrooms and meeting space for the partners and the college. And also, it's interesting, I think, to note that over a third of the facility's cost were paid with cash dollars from the partners. Anyway, the college continues to be recognized as a leader in the region as a result of this, and the project's very similar, of course, to what I think we're trying to do with ATUP. Anyway, I got one brochure, and they went out quickly because they had a huge attendance. I'm getting some more, and I'll get those two for your review. But thank you.
Thank you. Professor Davis Allen.
Unfortunately, my voice is not gone, so I do have a short report. Just to let you know that for the 2010-2011 IVC to IVC Lecture Series, which is sponsored and developed through the Academic Senate, we have already confirmed eight faculty speakers, seven of which will be full-time faculty, one is part-time. And as soon as we get confirmation and details, I would be happy to share them with you at future times. The only other thing, two other items. Number one is that the Academic Senate Cabinet has completed its first retreat in May. We have a second one planned for June, in which we were looking at best practices and becoming prepared through updating many of our procedures, so that we have a very successful 2010-11 academic year. And then finally, just to remind everyone, we are losing three of our full-time faculty, two retirements. Professors Craig Grossman, Kathleen Ledbetter, and Teri Thorpe in respectively speech, English, and accounting. Just for the record, they will be missed by the other faculty. They are emeritus now, and we lose three great faculty members on the front line of teaching. So just to put that in the record. Thank you.
Professor Vengas.
Hello. First off, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Dixie Bullock for being named interim chancellor. She's just a hoot, and I think it'll be a lot of fun. So, there you go. That's one. Two, some of the goals that we have for the Academic Senate coming up will be to finish the accreditation report, which has been, well, gosh, there's no comparison, except for military analogies, which are absolutely inappropriate, but it has been quite a slog through, and we're happy that we're coming to the end. And one, the other thing is to continue to find talented professors to help meet state requirements, like looking for our curriculum chair. And I also want to thank you for approving the stipends, because that really does help give us the time so that we can do the work. That's incredibly important. Also, looking forward to working with President Burnett on the implementation of the strategic plan that we have at Saddleback College. That was actually really an incredibly enlightening experience on how to appropriately put together a strategic plan, and I'm looking forward to the second part where we implement it. And to say, and I also have to say, during putting together the implementation, are you finished?
Yes, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Have a drink. Can I buy, let me buy you one. That's later. Anyway, I'm sorry, pause for the lack of decorum. For the strategic plan, one of the best things that came out of it was actually to show the college and really the nuts and bolts of putting together a strategic plan and taking the time to get broad input from every constituency group across the college. I think it was one of the most wonderfully unifying, well, exercises that we had throughout the last year and a half under President Burnett's leadership, and I thank him for that, because we truly did need that. And it reinvigorated the college, and we are ready to move forward. And finally, well, guys, it's just fun to be back. What a fun meeting, and I look forward to having more fun meetings with you.
Speaking of fun, someone all choked up to be back with us. Bill Hewitt on behalf of the Faculty Association.
How do you follow that kind of a report? Good evening, everybody. I bet you don't think I look like Louis Long, but I really am Louis Long tonight. Louis is unable to make it tonight. He is the new president of the Faculty Association, and he has asked me to come in and stay. I would be very brief. First, I would like to thank the board for approving the negotiation, are sunshining the negotiations on behalf of the district. The negotiation team for the Faculty Association is looking forward to coming up with a quick, satisfactory, and fair contract, and represents both sides. We recognize some of the problems and challenges that we're facing, and I think that the proposal is reflective of good contract negotiations, and I think will hopefully be done very soon. Secondly, I'd like to echo the President of the Academic Senate's welcome of Dixie. Dixie, we're all happy that you're here, and we're looking forward as well to working with you and working with members of the board, as well as members of the administrative staff in our negotiations. Thirdly, I'd like to inform the board, if Lee hasn't already, that beginning this fall, we will be moving towards fair share, which is a representation of the entire bargaining unit, and they will all become members and pay fee-paying members of the Faculty Association. Fourth, I would like to make note of having worked with Vice Chancellor David Bougue and working in some of the personnel issues, some of the contract issues, and I would like to personally commend him on behalf of the Faculty Association for being somebody that is balanced, fair. We don't always like what he comes up with, but on the other side, it's certainly fair, and it's certainly reflective of what's the best way to go. So on behalf of the Faculty Association, I'd like to recognize David and the effort that he's made. Finally, a point of personal privilege, if you mind, I'd like to personally thank John for coming to the recognition ceremony. We recognize 240 disabled and EOPS students, which are probably the highest-risk students in the entire college, for being on the dean's list, for graduating, and for successfully having 3.0s and above. And also, Glenn, if I could, thank you both. It meant a lot to the students, and I hope that you get an opportunity to see the kinds of work that we do in changing people's lives. Thank you very much.
Someone said I shook 150 hands, it was 240.
You lost count about halfway through.
Half the gymnasium was full, so...
Thank you both for emceeing the event.
On behalf of Saddleback Classified, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, President, Vice Chancellor, and Vice Chancellors. Saddleback College Classified Senate would also like to commend and congratulate the nursing program that are doing a fantastic job under the leadership of Dean Donna Raines Zostak, Director of Nursing, Assistant Dean Tammy Rice, Department Nursing Co-Chairs Jennifer Porzek and Diane Pestalisi, and all of the faculty, students, and staff involved with the Saddleback Nursing Program. Currently, the Senate is nominating for our one-year positions. We will conclude this week on that and have new officers for the secretary treasurer and at-large positions. Last month, the California Community College Classified Senate, 4CS, had its first-ever Southern California Senate President's Retreat. As South Vice President, I was honored to be able to host it here at Saddleback College. I want to thank President Burnett and Vice President Verden for their welcoming comments to the group and making them feel welcomed here at Saddleback. The attendance, even with the tough financial times, was great. We had 11 colleges participate, and we had some that had the president and president-elect participating. This will only be the beginning of more of these to come. Next month, at the Classified Leadership Institute at Grand La Baca in South Tahoe City, California, I will be presenting along with IVC's Classified Senate President Angela Mahaney and CSEA's President Shawna Morehouse, a workshop on an education's look at how a union and classified senate can complement each other for the betterment of all classified. The presentation will be called "Classified Senate and Unions: A Joint Responsibility." This will be the first time that a sitting union president and classified senate presidents have ever done a joint presentation at CLI for the good of all classified employees. We hope that this will be help to others to have as wonderful a relationship as we have in this district between our classified senates and unions.
Thank you very much. On behalf of CSEA, President Morehouse.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank trustee Jay for his comments and acknowledging that commencement is put together with a lot of people behind the scenes, because you're absolutely right. It couldn't have been done without classified staff, and I think probably 80% of the behind-the-scenes work was done by classified staff. So I thank you very much for that acknowledgement. I would also like to thank the chancellor and both college presidents for supporting a grassroots movement that we, the classified staff, are starting to save education in California, to bring back California's education to the top five or to the top 10 instead of the bottom five where it's at right now in the nation. We need to bring education in California back up to where it once was, and we're working on that. And I will hand out flyers for each of you. The movement is called CAWS, and it stands for California Advocates United to Save Education. I want you to make sure that you note on this flyer that there nowhere on here does it say "union." If this is not a union movement, this is a movement to save education in California, and we hope that all of you support it. One last thing, I ditto Bill Hewitt's comments about Dr. Bougue. CSEA and Dr. Bougue have an awesome relationship. We meet with him on a regular basis, and we work out many, many issues instead of filing grievances, and we have. And I just really want to thank Dr. Bougue for his support, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And on behalf of IVC Classified Senate, President Mahaney.
Thank you, and good evening. I would like to really go through a list of overwhelming achievements that I think that Classified Senate at IVC really accomplished this year. First of all, the leadership and the great support that we received from our president, Glenn Rockmore, was extraordinary, and we moved on to really start with the Classified Senate roles and the CSEA roles, and that's how we became really united and really respecting each other's steps. And we followed through the year, and this is how we're going to do this presentation in next month, in June, in Lake Tahoe. So thanks for the leadership. Thank you for the involvement and the opportunity that we have received in participation through so many committees. One of the committees that come to mind is the Scholarship Committee. We invite classified staff fundraising. We provided five scholarships this year of about $400 per person. So that was excellent from our classified staff. We also had the opportunity to have a Classified Senate Retreat on May 14, and it was terrific. Our vice presidents and our presidents were there in the morning time for Q and A, and we got to know them on a personal basis and to build communication among the groups and to be more familiar with how we treat each other, how the respect is built with each other. It was a great opportunity. We did the Strength Quest in the afternoon, and we will do some follow-ups on the Strength Quest for every single group and division to meet with their own supervisors and get to know their own greatest strengths and skills of each employee. The Classified Senate finalized their new constitution, the Constitution bylaws. This hasn't been revised for a good 10, 15 years, so we finally did it, and it, one of the things that came out of it is that the officers were asked to serve a two-year term, so you'll see me again for next year around. The, one of the documents that was very important for us classified staff was the new classified hiring document. It has been institutionalized. It has great support from our president and from our deans and managers. The process is in stage four right now, which is at the level of a task force to make the list finalized, and we are having our last meeting June 30th for the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.